Yeah. And then. I, I, good on, I know things that I have to break down what the things that we talk about far as we start. Before I can take it out.
That's better. That's way better.
Got the light in the right place. It's interesting, even the New York Times is having articles on how to get that appearance resumed.
Yeah. And what books they have behind you?
Yes.
Yeah. I draw the line at powdering my bald head, though.
The, I, I could be in the study, which is where I used to do this problem in, which makes great flash. And as the sun goes down, it comes right through that window and I can't see. Yeah, it just glares right into my eyes, so. I could do morning meetings there, but I'm doing the rest of them at my kitchen table.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Peter. Hey, Ben.
Hello.
Hi, Ben.
John, have we had emails regarding the budget?
Five.
Um. Can I ask you your refill when we get to Buck McConaughey?
Sure, I got them right here.
Okay. Thank you, Kurt. Hey, Kurt, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Remember the tree trunk?
Yes.
Have any of your committees been meeting like your arts commission?
I thought that, uh, I thought the Arts Committee talked about that, but they, they haven't met. I, I think they got an email, though. Let me follow up with Kim. He was, uh, meeting with them, at least via email, and find out if there was anything done with that.
Okay, because the other thought I had today was to talk to the school building committee about the presence of that trunk. See if maybe the architects could come up with something to put in the school.
Okay.
It's still there and it's gigantic.
Yeah. So I'll try to get an answer for you and, and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Oh, have we, um, decided, Tony, were you gonna mention anything at the start or?
I, I just gonna say a couple of very brief sentences. Um. Nothing, nothing conclusive, but I'm really gonna say is that, that, uh, a lot, we all have a lot of things on our mind. There's some very important things that happen in the world. Um, that, that probably overshadow, uh, the budget of a small town, but our job tonight is to deal with the budget. And so that's what we're going to do, don't deal with the bigger issues at another meeting.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna sign out just for like 10 seconds, I just somehow messed something up, I'll be right back.
I've just got this thing that popped up, it says, oh, now it's gone, it was like an ad for go to a meeting service.
It was the, it was the sign in sheet.
Oh, okay.
He's trying to get, trying to figure out how to put up his slides.
Hmm.
He assesses open PowerPoint like it's on his computer.
Have you guys been enjoying the nice day today?
Hmm.
I was out pulling bittersweet down off the rock wall, I finally had to stop because the roots were so deep. I figured if I kept pulling, I was gonna pull the whole wall down.
It's a terrible weed.
I, I said that literally because the, it has grown through the wall.
Oh, I believe it.
I could just see one of those big rocks coming down on my hand or a foot or something.
It's killed many a trees in my woods that, you know, just thick, you know, wraps them until they kill them and.
Last fall, my son and his daughter went out into the woods, they wanted walking sticks. And they came back with about five that were twined. They were, and they were beautiful, they were regular and everything. It, it, there's just so much of the stuff out there that's been growing for so long. I just hope they didn't stick them in the ground and have them sprout Brooklyn, that's all. I was at Walmart and there was barberry for sale. And I said to the guy, you know, this is illegal, it's invasive and it's very bad. He went and looked and he said it is illegal, he pulled them all off the shelves.
Just so you know, we are, we are live in the meeting as it started.
Looks like somebody found the cherry sale somewhere.
Just curious, can we tell how many people in the community, um, get on to the site while we're doing the meeting?
Uh, right now there'd be zero because none of them contacted me for the information.
But, but would we, it is possible to know how many people watch our meetings?
Uh, watch, uh, yes, I don't know if they can do that live, but they.
Hey, Terry.
Hey there.
Terry.
Well, Peter signed off for a moment, but he'll be back as soon as he can take his stuff out.
I'd say I like, I like to set up better on a laptop, I could see more faces.
Yes. Although when somebody splits the screen, then the number of faces you can see really drops dramatically.
If you view active camera, like most of the staff have their camera activated, you, then it just gets down to, right now, seven of us.
Um, John, uh, I might have, I don't know if I messed it up, the share screen, I know you sent that to me.
Uh, probably because you disconnected, I'll make you present there.
Pardon?
You're presenting now, you, you have the power.
Do I hit share?
Yeah, when it's your time, hit share and then have PowerPoint up on your screen and it'll. You know, present, have it up in, uh, like you open up PowerPoint now. Put it in the, uh, slideshow mode. And then when you hit share screen, it'll go right to that.
Well, it's seven o'clock. And I am going to call to order the special town council meeting. Um. It's a budget workshop, but it is our public hearing on the town's budget for 2021. Um, you will have, if you signed in a little early, you would have heard us working out the details of our virtual public hearing. Um, as usual, we are, we are doing this because of the COVID virus and the prohibition against public meetings. Uh, for those of you that, who have been following us too closely. Um, the governor's orders has prohibited all public meetings and, uh, closed town hall. And also prohibited referendums, so we have been working on the town's budget. Uh, we have delayed the time to, that we can bring it to you because we've been waiting to see what was going on in the state. Uh, so, uh, hopefully you received your brochure about the town budget in the mail yesterday. They were put in the mail on Friday, again, it went out later than we had hoped because we were waiting to see what was going to happen on the state level. Uh, so tonight is, uh, sort of in place of the town meeting in that, uh, we will present the budget and give you an opportunity to comment on it. Uh, we will be having another meeting on Wednesday and then our regular meeting on June 8th. Uh, we hope to be able to approve a budget on June 4th. Uh, but if not, or if there's more work to be done, uh, we can postpone that until June 8th. Now, uh, so we, we're, we will be taking written, email and phone in comments tonight. Now, uh. This is an odd time to do this, I know that everybody has a lot of very important things on their mind, local, national. Certainly, uh, everybody is very concerned about the consequences of the death of, uh, of the young man in, uh, Minneapolis and the revelations of, uh, the consequences of the reawakened understanding of, of the meaning of that death. So, uh, we are not prepared to make any comments at this time. Because our job is just to do the budget and that's what we're gonna do tonight. So, uh. To begin with, we need a roll call, Sarah Ann, could you please call the roll of council?
Yes, Osberger. Earthalot.
Here.
Ruder.
Here.
Frattoni.
Here.
Freudman. Katchenberger.
Yeah.
Moran.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Shakin.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, has anybody heard from either Mr. Freudman or Mr. Osberger? Okay, uh, well, sorry to miss them. Um, the next item on our agenda is the presentation of the council's budget. Um, the council received a budget from the town manager, there was a public hearing on the manager's budget. Uh, we have reviewed it piece by piece over the last several weeks. And Mr. Katchenberger will present to you the council's version of that budget, Mr. Katchenberger.
Thank you. And John, I'll hit the share now, uh, applications. And is that working?
There we go.
Okay, just wanna make it slideshow, Peter.
What's that?
Here, make it slideshow.
Great, okay, uh, can everyone see that okay? So it's on, alright, alright, so, uh, thank you, Tony, and, um, thank you everyone and good evening. The, as the mayor mentioned, um, this is a public hearing, unfortunately, along with the rest of the state, we will not have our typical town meeting where the budget is, uh, voted on, subject to a possible referendum later. Instead, uh, this is a hearing for, to, uh, receive public comments and then on, uh, in a couple of days, on Thursday, we will have a special town council meeting to, uh, to vote on the budget and hopefully it'll be passed at that time. The agenda for the meeting, this meeting, is, is the budget process, uh, brief, and I'm really gonna try to be brief, um, on this because again, our purpose is to hear from you. Your, um, and Director of Finance Sherri Trahan will join us, uh, shortly, she's in another, uh, another meeting, I think Region 19. Before I start, I also, first of all, on behalf of the council, very much wanted to thank Finance Director Sherri Trahan, who, by the way, this is unfortunate for us, her last year preparing the Mansfield budget, she retires shortly. Uh, good news for her, not for, not for us perhaps, uh, but she has done her usual very thorough and excellent job. But one with people in her office, uh, the town manager John Carrington, and all our town employees. Uh, preparing a budget is an arduous process at any time, uh, as well as one that takes a lot of time. And yet, this is done, it was done well, uh, on top of all the other concerns and issues that our town managers and town staff have had in keeping things running. So I just wanted to, again, on behalf of the council, thank them.
Yes.
So, the governor decided early on, um, and early now, I guess, meaning in March, um, that due to COVID-19 and the need to social distance, there will do not, there, there will not be any annual town meetings. And the town, for Mansfield at least, the town council will decide, vote, not only adopt the proposed budget, but then, subject to comments and others, will then vote on the budget instead of a town council meeting this year. Uh, tonight is the public hearing, the special town council meeting is next, uh, is on Thursday, starting at 6:30 PM. Uh, there, tonight, we, uh, there's an opportunity and hopefully people will call in. But there's also, and we'll talk about this very briefly at the end, there's also an opportunity for anyone to send in comments uh, in by email or by regular mail to the town council, to the, uh, town manager, and the address is later on, uh, up through noon on Thursday, and we will consider those comments and questions as we, uh, vote, uh, next, uh, in a couple of days. There will also be an opportunity on June 4th to, uh, to call in live as well. This is, I, I am not gonna read PowerPoint slides, and I think for everyone that's really tedious, except this one. Because this one, I think, is, this is, now, this is the summary, and this is, uh, this is why, you know, why we adopted the budget subject to approval. And the key points are, we are not cutting services. Uh, we preserve and maintain the quality. The pay-as-you-go capital plan is something that the council adopted, uh, maybe eight or nine years ago. Uh, and that is, for most expenditures, we're gonna try to, we will pay for it as we go. We will save the money and then pay for it rather than bond it. And we will bond it to major purchases that the town needs, uh, whether it's, you know, whether it's buildings or major improvements or purchases of major equipment. We still increase, and we'll talk about this a little later, uh, we, while the increase is modest, we are increasing the fund balance again, as we have done every year, I think, for the last 10 or 11 years. The Board of Education budget maintains the current class size guidelines, very crucial to, uh, equality education in all of the programs and sister, and, uh, services. We do address, we don't solve the Mansfield community center deficit, but we certainly address it. Uh, the funding will come from the surplus, uh, in programs. Uh, and obviously, having this Mansfield community center, which I think most of us would absolutely agree, is vital to the town and, uh, and we will continue to work with it. But at least for this year, we do fund the deficit. And then we also know, and this is one of the reasons why we continue, uh, both to have a, uh, zero rate mill increase as well as to maintain and augment the capital, uh, the reserve fund, is to prepare for whatever the economic impact of the pandemic will be. Next. This is just for the budget overview. As you can see, the town budget for combined town and public schools is $43 million. Um, and Region 19 contribution, uh, which is mandatory, and their budget was voted on in, in April 7th, is a little over $11,000. And this, uh, and, uh, we put in, the majority of the money is in the general fund and then $3,499 in the capital fund, and we will talk about both of those a little more later. The revenues, again, this is typical for Mansfield, the blue is intergovernmental. And this is 18, uh, 18, over $18 million, this is largely pilot and special pilot. Mansfield is one of five towns that a number of years ago was provided additional pilot funding because of the, as we all know, the large amount of public property we have in the state, uh, in the town that we cannot tax. That's $18 million, comes, uh, plus change comes from the state. Um, $35 million and a half from taxes, our taxes, and then the other is 1.271 million. So this is where we get our money. This is a reevaluation year. And there was both, uh, and there was a, a somewhat modest, uh, growth in addition to the Grand List and is noted primarily from two properties, or two sources, Nathan Hale Inn on the Yukon, uh, near, well, technically may not be on the campus, but it's on the, physically on the campus, and then Eversource. And real estate on the Grand List increased by 1.1, uh, 1.51%. In terms of outlook. Flat, and that's probably the best, that's the best we've been able to hope for, for a number of years, on and off. And it's, uh, I'm sure likely to be the best we can hope for and perhaps not achieve, given the potential severity of the state budget crisis, uh, due to COVID-19 and other issues. Um, again, pilot, and you can see the chart here, in terms of how, both how much we get, with the blue being, uh, what we should get by statute, and the green, what we actually get. Um, and it's unusual, and in fact, has not occurred since I've been on the council, that we're ever fully funded, and that's true presumably of the other towns that receive pilot. Here's where the money goes. Here's where the money goes. And $33 million goes to schools, which is about, we'll look at it, about 62%. And that's consistent with what, within a couple of percentage points, with what it's been for many years, and in most towns, if not all towns in Connecticut, education continues to be or is the number one source of expenditure. And I won't read each of them, but then, in other significant sources, of course, the general government, which is 2.19 million, public safety, which is 4.87 million, we receive some bit of a benefit in that each year or for years, the cost of their state trooper service to have resident troopers has gone up, it actually went down slightly in this last year, making it more affordable. And then others, community services, townwide services, such as employee benefits, as well as energy and facilities management. And that's explained well, both in the key in the chart. The Region 19 budget was approved, as I noted, for $11 million, and that is our contribution, that's not something we can negotiate, we can vote as taxpayers and as citizens and representing the voters in Region 19, but once that is our percentage, and Mansfield continues to be the largest of the three towns, of course, but once that is in, this is our assessment that we must fund, it's $80,000 less. As you can see, the school, Mansfield Public Schools come in under, from last year's budget, $170,000 under, and the town is 1.43 over from last budget. And this explains, summarizes where the net increases, which includes contracted salary increases, which, you know, through negotiated bargaining, this is, while the increases are not large, they obviously represent a, you know, a sizable amount of any increase in the budget. And yeah, and I think that, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but the actual percentage increase is quite small. Municipal employers' retirement system, the good news, this is MIR, this is, once we agreed to participate in this a long time ago, we are in it, the ability to pull out is very difficult. The good news on this is that unlike some other state budget funds, this one is largely vested, or funded, rather. Our total obligated non-disciplinary increases, meaning things that we must, have agreed and must do, which includes these expenses, goes up by 6.3%. And then these are proposed adjustments to maintain current services. Talk, you can see there, we'll talk a little more, I mentioned briefly in a couple of minutes, the shared communication position, but essentially, a couple of part-time positions, and then some, as you can see, increase in hours for current staff. This is the chart I mentioned a few minutes ago, and I think this is, this is one of the healthiest things we're going to look at in terms of, you know, and I think the town in Mansfield overall can be proud about, and this is the increase in the town, the fund balance. And the fund balance has two major purposes, one, of course, is, you know, we often call it a rainy day fund. It's our reserves, it's our ability to access money, capital, money, if we, you know, if absolutely necessary. You know, it's often called a rainy day fund, and hopefully not, but what may be the most necessary rainy day might be coming very shortly. So it's very, you know, this is important that we have this money, and we do. The second purpose of fund balance and to increase it is that it also lowers the cost of borrowing. The town has to take out bonding, which we occasionally do, like all towns, then the higher percentage of fund balance we have, the lower the cost of the bonding, and that's a second benefit. We have not had to dip into the fund balance, at least not as long as I can remember. This is what we did last week, in terms of modifications. I mentioned, there was a proposal, which we compromised on, I guess, to hire a communications specialist, and that person would presumably start July 1st, at the start of the fiscal year. We deferred that person at the earliest to January 1st, 2021, hiring that person. And following further review in November simply means that we'll look and see, you know, as the year, as the year comes to, the calendar year comes to a close, whether in fact, with town, this is a good, continues to be a good use of town's funds. If so, then we will hire January 1st, if not, then we'll forego it at least for this year. And then you can see several of the other changes made, and the net gain, the bottom line on this is that the manager, town manager's proposed budget had a very small mill increase, which we took down, were able to take down to zero mill increase without any change in services, and continued funding of contributions to the general fund. Mansfield Board of Education, this shows, overall, there's a net decrease of 0.7%. You can see the major sources of the trends, the major trends here, just as it is with the town, a combination of salary increases, facility and upgrade as well, and then we were fortunate in a couple of other situations to actually have fewer debtors than we thought. The capital, there's three funds that we look at in the budget, the general fund, which is one that we spend most of the time on, certainly, and have spent most of the time, the capital fund, which is to pay for money, to pay for major expenses, it's determined by policy documents of the town, and then the CNR, or Capital and Non-Recurring Fund. This is, I think, one of the least friendly terms we have in terms of understanding it, and this is exactly when it'd be great, I don't know if Sherri Trahan is here, but I think they're appropriate for other questions if people have it. But the CNR is not a source of revenue, it is not a source of additional debit or expenditure, it's really a holding tank, just as the explanation says. This is where money is put into and held until it is then distributed for its particular use, whether it's to pay, you know, to purchase the capital, the fire truck, if that's what it is, the purchase, when enough money has been saved to make a capital purchase that has been planned, the money will be in the non-capital and non-recurring fund until that money is then used for that service. And the major source of funding is it comes from the general fund. That is how we fund capital improvements largely, and then you can see several other as well. And then proposed usage is, for this CNR, is again, think of it as a pass-through, is to transfer this to the capital fund, the large majority of it. But here's the capital fund revenues, this is where the third bucket, general fund, CNR, and then capital fund revenues, this is the third bucket, and most, of course, most of the funding comes from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, which we just talked about, and that is essentially a transfer through the CNR fund, a transfer of $2.6 million from the general fund to the capital fund. And then listed here are other sources of income, revenue, rather, to the capital fund. And this is what we're spending it on, or this is what we propose to spend it on, assuming the budget's approved. And this is a general breakdown by category of where the capital funds are going, with the most in public works. And then here we have a list of, next four slides are listing the major projects. You can see here, so for example, for public works, road drainage and resurfacing is over $1 million, tree removal is $90,000. Next, we have facilities management, building repairs and maintenance, unfortunately, as we know, many of our town buildings, not even thinking of the school, are quite old, and the cost of maintaining goes up. The education, school building, building, the capital fund major project, we, years ago, I think in 2012, 13, we agreed to fund a major, $150,000 to $200,000 a year in infrastructure improvement to the schools. And public safety, general government and community services. And finally, community development. And this is what it comes, what does this all mean for the average, for all of us? Well, for the average taxpayer, again, there's no mill rate increase, or no mill rate increase, it stays at 31.38 mills. Because median home value, which is $227,000, but always assessed at 70%, is $159,500, this is a modest increase, which is a good thing for people whose homes increase, this is a modest increase from the previous year, and therefore, there's actually a monthly increase, or, I'm sorry, probably the best way to look at it, yearly increase of, you know, just my screen, let's see. Of seven, the average taxpayer who has a median home, you know, that average homeowner will face $78 a year increase in taxes, again, not due to increase in the mill rate, but to assess value of the home. So let's take, so, and for the average taxpayer, that would be $5,005. And taking that as, you know, as a median, of course, this is, this explains where, out of that $5,000, how it's distributed up into the various departments of the town, with, again, education receiving about 60%, a little over 60% of the funding, and that includes, education includes both the Mansfield Board of Ed as well as the Region 19. Comparative mill rate, both, these are the five or six neighboring towns, as well as some comparison towns to compare with, we are, continue to be the lowest, have the lowest mill rate of any town around us, other than Wellington, which is at 30.09. And then finally, to conclude, the highlights is we're funding current services, including Mansfield Community Center. We continue to pay most items through saving for it, medium-sized or larger items through saving for it, and then purchasing it when the money is available. And then we still contribute to increasing the fund balance, a rainy day fund. And these are the people you can ensure contact with, with questions, objections, concerns, praise, praise is okay, but more important is that you contact us with, you know, with any of us or all of us, with, you know, so you let us know what you think. The virtual, this has the information, and this is also, this slide presentation, as well as this particular information, for the special town council meeting on Thursday at 6:30 PM is right here. Again, you can, it can be viewed live, public comment by mail or email, ideally by noon on Thursday, and there's also the opportunity to call in. So that's the end of this presentation. Now we get to the major portion, which is to listen to any public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for your detailed description of what we've been working on. We have gone through this budget department by department, almost line by line, so this is a very significant summarization of the work that we've been doing for the last number of weeks. We have been very concerned about the consequences of the legislature's not meeting this year. They have not adopted the budget, we don't know if they plan to, that we are in the set, the 2021 budget is the second year of a biennium, so it's possible they don't need to have a budget, in the second year, all they really need to do is approve changes. However, I am assuming that somewhere in the early fall, or maybe after the election, I'm not sure which it will be, the legislature will convene, and it's possible that we'll be faced with some recisions, the impact of unemployment and slowing down of the economy incurred before, well, before the end of the fiscal year. So we have been, we have been conservative in the sense that we have not cut dramatically in the budget, we have tried to keep everything as stable as possible. One of the things that's been very clear to us over the course of this COVID isolation and quarantine is that our human services, our educational services, our senior services and so on, are extremely important for the town. We have been continuing to provide, our staff has been continuing to provide food, education, consulting, online activities, everything from celebrations of May Day and the bear hunt, to daily phone calls to kids in schools, very large food distribution, over 150 families receive food share, resources and so on. So we have been very cautious about doing anything that would endanger our ability to provide public services. Mr. Carrington, have you received any input from the public on this budget?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I received five emails. I did not receive any requests to phone into this meeting, but I did receive five emails.
Could you?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, shall we read the call for the public hearing?
Sure.
I think we may, that may be what we're required to do to open up a public hearing.
Okay.
The Mansfield Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on June 2nd, 2020, virtually via GoToMeeting to solicit comments regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020/21 budget. In accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B and Social Distancing Guidelines Recommended by the CDC to Slow Community Spread of COVID-19, this meeting is being held virtually. The public may view the meeting live at mansfieldct.gov/video or on Charter Spectrum Cable Channel 191. The website is recommended as it is a higher image clarity. Public comment will be accepted by email at budget2021@mansfieldct.org or by USPS mail at 4 South Eagleville Road, Mansfield, Connecticut, 06268, and must be received prior to the meeting. Public comment received after the meeting will be shared at the next meeting. Additionally, public comment can be phoned in live. Please email townmngr@mansfieldct.org or call 860-429-3336, extension 5, by noon on the day of the meeting to receive instructions for how to phone in public comment. Copies of the proposed budget and related materials are on file at the Town Clerk's Office, 4 South Eagleville Road, Mansfield, and are posted on the town's website, mansfieldct.gov, dated at Mansfield, Connecticut, this 29th day of May, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrington, would you read the emails you've received?
Yes, I will, and I apologize if I get anybody's name pronounced wrong. I'm an engineer, so maths is my first language, English is my second language. The first one is from Ellen Tolman of 74 Ball Hill Road, Mansfield, Connecticut. "Good morning, I'm writing to express my support of the Mansfield Parks and Rec Department. It is my understanding that the programs and facilities that make up the department are in danger of not receiving funds from the town. Parks and Rec provides many important programs for residents of all ages. While MCC has not been physically accessible during COVID-19, they continue to provide online resources, and the services they provide beyond the walls of the community center have helped to support and maintain community members during this time. Please support Parks and Rec programming as it is part of what makes Mansfield a wonderful place to call home." The next one is from Rachel Gershik. The next one is from Rachel Gershik of Hampton, Connecticut. She writes, dear Town Council, I am writing this letter on behalf of the Mansfield Community Center, just as the name states, Mansfield Community Center is a center of the community both for Mansfield and neighboring towns. The center provides a multifaceted facility where people can gather in a non-sequarian, sectarian atmosphere to exercise, participate in various sports, share ideas, hold events of interest to the community, provide programs and a safe environment for our youth to thrive in. While budgets are always a concern, particularly when times are difficult, there are some things where the return on the dollar needs to be viewed through a lens that focuses beyond the material cost slash profit ideology. There are institutions, things, events, et cetera, which have value to the community by providing opportunities for the body, mind, and spirit that is quantified differently. Mansfield Community Center is such an expenditure. I hope the council will recognize the value this facility provides and find the resources so it may continue its vital function for the well-being of the community. Next one is from David Palmer, a member of the Recreation Advisory Committee. Dear Town Council Member, when I moved to Mansfield nearly eight years ago, the first place I looked for a connection to the community was the MCC. I was welcomed into a large circle of wonderful neighbors that I would not have otherwise met. Today, the MCC remains the primary home of my connection and involvement in the best town in Connecticut. Please look favorably on the supplemental funding request from the Director of Parks and Recreation. The staff has worked hard to maintain a cohesive community in the face of this pandemic, and now they are working hard to reopen the community center this month. The MCC truly has something for every Mansfield resident and is the center post of the health and stability of the community. Next is from Jay Peter Gogartin, 968 Warrenville Road, Mansfield, Connecticut. And he says, to assess the budget, it would be nice to hear a few more details on how the, is the COVID-19 pandemic is incorporated into the plan and budget for the new larger elementary school, how the school design will be adjusted to allow for social distancing, how the planning takes into account that support from the state may turn out smaller than anticipated. And last is from Jim Rayner. He asks, can you give a breakdown on, of the increases in the town operations portion of the proposed budget that accounts for a $1,403,520 or 7.3% increase? And I sent them, uh, two of Peter's slides that explain that.
Thank you. The, uh, the, we don't normally respond to public comment, however, I want at this moment just to, uh, put people's minds at rest. There is no money for the new school in this budget. And, uh, the committee, the, the school building committee has received input from a number of its members asking for consideration for public health, uh, concerns in the new building, but nothing has happened yet. Very well, I'm sure. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council at this time? Because of the unusual nature of this public hearing, um, we will hold it open until, uh, the public comment section of our meeting on Thursday, on the 4th. So we will receive emails, phone-in testimony, uh, or snail mail, however you'd like to submit testimony. But, um, it looks to me as if we will be able to adopt a budget on Thursday. Mr. Shaken, you had your hand up?
Do, do we need to continue anything in the form of a motion or?
I think we just need to not close the hearing.
Okay.
Ms. Jane, do you agree?
Uh, are you then planning to formally close it at your next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that sounds, that sounds right.
Okay, please don't let me forget.
I think we'll need to adjust the current agenda for that meeting then. Which we have time to adjust it.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
All right, so that completes the business on our agenda for tonight's meeting, which is a special meeting, and therefore we can't amend the agenda. So the next item of business is thank all of you for attending and thanking our staff for the months and months of work that goes into this budget. And, uh, in case the public doesn't know, we have an award-winning budget every year. Uh, the last several years, we have received certificates from the, uh, Finance Officers Association for the quality of our budget, uh, and it is entirely available to the public online. So, uh, with that, I will adjourn, a motion to adjourn, if there's such a motion. Mr. Katschberg moves to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
A lot seconds. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Charlie, you're not in favor of our, of our, uh, adjournment? We adjourned. I think we have, either have one abstention or one very slow connection. There we go, got it. Thank you. Okay, we are adjourned, and thanks very much.
Hi, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Goodbye.